Like that because we'll certainly be very attentive, but we are allowed to get into a discussion with you. The reasoning behind that is the public has to be made aware of anything we're going to discuss. That way, should there ever be any issues that have two sides to them, that, you know, somebody might be in favor of doing something, and they get on their, if they're on the agenda, and they come and approach us and we discuss it, there may be somebody that feels the other way, and so they wouldn't have the opportunity to share their views on it. So that's the kind of logistics of it. But, once again, those that sign in, you may speak, say whatever you want, and if you ever get to the point that you want to address the board, if you will just let Ms. McAndo in advance, he'd be on the agenda, and we can go from there, okay? First person is Jonathan Tackett, and he wants to talk about the Board of Education weight room. Jonathan?
Thank you, Board members. Unfortunately, I'm not able to be here next Tuesday. I'll be on Military Orders away in Morgantown. And I know there's one individual in this room that I think will be present at the next Tuesday, who are meeting to discuss this further, but I wanted to give the Board my opinion of that situation. For the last 15 months, I have been exercising in the Board's weight room after hours with other local law enforcement and probation officers in this county to improve our physical fitness, and that was given permission to us by the Board of Education. During that time, and I don't have an exact time, Kyle Garrickson had been providing athletic guidance to students, I believe also middle school and high school students that participate in athletics, both boys and girls. During that time, I have not seen anything out of professionalism, good moral character, and, in all reality, a leader that I would hope the Board of Education would want, representing them and standing up for the students. Now, there's been a lot of rumors and speculations, and I have no facts that I'm going to talk about here today, but the one thing that I do want to point out, I read the WSSAC rules last night, I've looked as extensively as I could of school board property and how that is to be used, and my history with working with the Board with other programs at the high school, I'm, sort of shockingly, still nervous standing in front of you as many times as I've been here. But, the one thing that I want to point out, and it's factual, is what has been transpiring here at the Board of Education weight room, I don't see any difference in the buddy league system. I don't see any difference in cheerleaders hiring coordinators for their activities. They raise money, they pay for those people to come in, use Board facilities, and train those students to the standard that they wish to compete. Now, to my knowledge, this had been brought up in the past, and Kyle was requested to get a business license, liability insurance, and I also want to make my point clear that Kyle is a licensed personal trainer, and he went to college to get that degree. He actually is from Lincoln County, and he returned back to Lincoln County to participate in the school system and participate in athletics here. You don't find that very often. Not anything against Lincoln County, but there's not a lot of people flourishing to come back, and I think we need to look very hard on the intent. Now, also, I would like to say for his dedication to the Board, I believe it was a month and a half ago, I was notified by my mother, who works down the hall, that possibly someone was coming into this Board facility after hours, whether they were making sure one of the doors were not properly secured, and she notified me, and I notified local law enforcement, that if we were in here to check those facilities. I also passed that off to Kyle. And during that time period, myself and Kyle have corresponded back and forth, and if I'm not able to be here to secure all the doors and make sure everything's secure when I leave, Kyle goes around and makes sure everything is secure, so no one is coming in here violating your rules or being in here when there's nobody else present in this building. On several occasions, we both reported mechanical issues inside of the utility room where people were messing with the AC and the heat. I've notified the maintenance department regarding those. I hope that you look at the facts across the county, because there are other programs that are benefiting students that are very similar in this situation, and I would hope that you would look at those and compare the two, and as far as I'm aware, Kyle did appropriately acquire all the requirements that he was previously told to get to perform his services with the students. And I believe next Tuesday, from what I understand, you're going to have an enormous group of people here, hopefully, in support of the reason that I'm here. I want to thank the Board for letting me speak today, and good luck.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate you. Okay, next, we have Lenny Romans, and he's also going to talk about the Board of Education weight room. Mr. Romans?
Thank you. I appreciate you taking time to let us speak. We understand that you're not able to make any actions, and we knew that when we came. We just hope that some kind of resolution can be made. We know you guys have the best interests of our students. We were privileged to be here not too long ago, when you recognized academic achievements, and we appreciate you guys taking your time to do that after hours, on your own time, to help to improve and let our students know that you're interested in them as individuals. I want to first and foremost talk about Kyle. I know some of the concerns is the financial implications that's involved with that. It's already been mentioned about other programs, and I'm sure he is like me, we don't want those programs stopped. Anything that benefits our youth, we want to be able to see those opportunities. We live in a rural area, and I work in a facility that offers training similar to that which Kyle provides, but he provides more than just training. Kyle is a mentor. He loves our children. He loves the kids of Lincoln County. Kyle's a 26-year-old fellow that could go just about anywhere he wanted to go, and he chose to come back here and invest in our children. Lincoln County, if I'm not mistaken, doing some research, 8.9% of Lincoln County has a population with a bachelor's degree or higher, 8.9% of Lincoln County has a bachelor's degree or higher. If we don't provide opportunities for somebody like Kyle, who has that bachelor's degree or higher, who has trained, who is capable, who is qualified to provide those services at rates far below what you can go to St. Albans, or Honey, or Taze Valley, he's providing a service to our kids, and not only providing a service, he's not just doing it for, he's doing it because he loves our children. He cares about our community. He wants to invest here, he wants to live here, he wants to have a family here, he wants to live in our area, and we need to support people like that. Some of the things that he's offering, I've done a, from the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources and the Bureau for Behavioral Health and Health Facilities, from 2010 to 2014's one report, and the other one is 2004 to 2008. Back in 2004 to 2008, Lincoln County, when it talks about fair to poor health, we were number five in the state, ranked five for poor health. We were ranked nine for no leisure exercise. We were ranked number two for obesity. We were ranked two for diabetes. We were ranked three for hypertension. We were ranked three for high cholesterol, and we were ranked 10th for heart attack, angina, and stroke. Now, if we look and we can see that positive gains has been made as far as West Virginia's state ranking from 2010 to 2014, so for fair and poor health, we went from five to eight. For obesity, we went from two to eight. Diabetes, we went from two to 22. But it's not that we've gotten better, it's just everybody else has gotten a whole lot worse. Our percentage in 2004 for poor health was 31.2%. It's 32.6. So, poor health, according to these statistics, we've gotten worse. When it talks about no leisure time for physical activity, we were at 30.3, now we're at 37.8. Our state ranking has changed, but we've actually gotten worse. Obesity in 2004, 2008 was a 37.4%, now we're at 40.1% for Lincoln County. What Kyle is doing for our community and for our children, he's establishing lifestyles that promote healthy living, wellness, fitness. People talk about our athletic programs and the things that he's offering there. We can see that there have been positive gains in that way, in that regards. He's taking kids to visits to colleges to give them opportunities for sports performance and things to that nature in colleges, and he's got contacts that he's helping our children not just in physical fitness. And I want to talk from a personal standpoint. Kyle's grandmother passed away yesterday. My son is sending a message, you know, telling him, "I'm thinking of you, we love you," and Kyle's like, "We love you, and we appreciate you." He loves our kids. He loves our community. I know there's probably policies that's kind of forced you to make a decision that you've had to make. I'm sure you didn't just on a whim say, "We're going to cut this program out because it's beneficial," but you're smart people. You care about our community. There's a way, if there's a way to make a positive change and to fix this to where he can continue to provide those services, I'm sure you guys and Ms. Smith can come up with a viable option for him to be able to provide these valuable services to our community. We hope, giving you a little heads up about the next meeting will give you time to consider and think about options. I know sometimes policies and legalities kind of get in the way of doing what's right, but when there's a will, there's a way, so I hope you guys could come up with a viable viable option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romans. Next, Eric Lang, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Eric Lang.
Thank you for your time. I echo everything Lenny said, I also echo everything Mr. Tackett said. I'm glad Lenny brought the statistics for the health regarding these kids, but one point I also want to make is that the decision not to let Kyle work with these kids hurts these kids. So let me explain what I mean. Two years ago, Randall Watts was a sophomore, in between her sophomore and junior year, had lower back problems. We hadn't started working with Kyle yet. Started working with Kyle, she eventually got up to squatting 275 pounds going into her senior year. For a girl that's only been lifting weights for two years, that's a huge gain. Because of that leg strength that she got working from Kyle, she now has lower back pain issues that are gone, so she don't have those problems anymore. Our girls are more durable, they're faster, they're smarter, they're responsible. I can stand up here for hours and talk about Kyle's personality, but if anybody's ever met Kyle, it speaks for himself. Kyle works with girls from the soccer team, football team, baseball team, basketball, cheerleaders now, and it's not just a small group of kids. Our softball girls come in, groups of five to 10 maybe, 10 at the max, usually seven or eight's the average. He has these girls for an hour, an hour and 15 minutes. It's not an easy hour and 15 minutes, it's not playtime, they don't go in there to play around, they go in there to work, and Kyle works them hard. If you can see what Kyle does with these girls and see how excited they are to get here, it's tremendous to watch. It's fun. They learn everything from him, he's hands-on, he's professional, he's down to their level, he gets them. If I were Kyle, I'd pack my bags and run, because this ain't the environment I'd want to work in. I'd leave, I'd go chase that money. Why Kyle's here? He has to have a better heart than I do, it's the only thing I can understand. And bless him, he's 26 years old, and he inspires me.
Yes, me too.
He's the 26-year-old I wouldn't want to be at that age. If you could get these kids excited about going to school as much as they do to come over here and get their Hahn Dinsky by, we'd have an institute full of scholars. I think Kyle's somebody we can all learn from. We need to create an environment that nurtures him and what he's doing with these kids. Because the alternative to these kids coming in here and working out, working on their fitness, which is a lifestyle choice, I've been doing it my entire life, it's not easy, it's hard. Kyle talks about every aspect with. If we don't help Kyle out, Kyle's going to run, these kids are going to end up in trouble. We got options. I implore you guys to take the right one, the right path, the one that necessarily helps just Kyle. Kyle's just the means to which we get these kids to where we want them to be. We need to create an environment here where they can use these facilities, have professional, hands-on guidance while they do it, and we'll make better human beings out of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. We appreciate all your comments that you made today, all three of our speakers. Just as an informational thing, I want to interject something. Those of you that regularly attend Board meetings or follow, know at the end of our conclusion of our business items we have, we always have an opportunity for Board members or the superintendent to address anything that they feel they, you know, oftentimes we have questions, we'll ask the superintendent about, or he may have information he wants to share with us, because typically, the only time that we do that is when we have meetings. And I believe that Mr. Minkip is going to do that this afternoon, because he knows this is an issue that's been widely discussed. Now, once again, we're not going to get into a discussion about that, we're just going to listen to what Mr. Minkip has to say. Should it warrant, and it be on our agenda next week, then we would have that open discussion. But I just wanted to share that so that any of you that might want to stay through the conclusion of the meeting would hear what Mr. Minkip is going to say to us, because you have to realize, many of these things occur, we don't know about. Mr. Minkip was hired to administer the school system, and that's what his job is, and it's to follow the laws and policies of the state, the federal, and the State Board of Education. So oftentimes, many things happen, and people, you know, I've been approached many times about something, and, you know, I don't know anything about it yet, but eventually, when the time comes right, he will share that with us, or if I ask him, or we have a meeting, I say, "Yeah, I was asked about this," and he'll let us know. But I just want to let you know that that is going to be something that he has shared with me, that he's going to talk about this evening or this afternoon, and anybody, if you want to stick around and see what he's going to tell us, you're more than welcome to do so. Okay, let's move on to our presentations and reports next, please. First, we have Vince Webb with school safety, or about school safety, I should say. Mr. Webb.
First, before we get started, I just want to take time to say thank you for listening to me speak today. Don't speak while podiums, settle if you don't mind, we'll move around a little bit. Mom always called me, "Make sure you always tell people thank you before you get started." I want to let her know, Mom, I thank you.
You're doing what you're told, you're good.
Now, the reason why I'm here, I've spoken to several people at the high school about this issue of school security. I drive around in my job a lot, by myself, and in that time, you get to think of a lot of different things. I watch TVs all the time, I watch the news, how many times, how many school shootings, how many people die, and what happens? What happens every single time? We can't get rid of people's guns, but nobody wants to do anything. And what happens? Well, the next school shooting comes up. We can't really get rid of people's guns? People are dead, students are dead, kids are dead. What happens? Nothing. Nothing happens. We can't get rid of people's guns. Okay, I understand that, but what else do you want to do? Well, it hit me one day as I was driving around, we don't have to take people's guns away to make school safe. We, as a community, have to start at our schools, and we can start right over here at this school, getting to know our students, setting up measures so that they can be safe. Some of this stuff that I'm going to talk about has already been discussed, apparently. But one idea that I came up with is that over there at that school, now, please, I'm not an artist, okay?
Go ahead.
I said, "Please," again. I know when you come in the doors of the school, you've got entryways. Here, you've got the main office sits there, over here on this side, there's another entrance comes here, right? The guns out of that main hallway. You've got this hallway here, there's auditorium, auditorium and gym, stuff like that, all these places are people that can get access to. On the left side, you come in this way, and there's a long hallway down through here, and there's also other auditoriums and classes, stuff like that over on this side, offices. We have two main problems. One, we have to worry about somebody getting into that school. It's not, how many times have you seen it? It's a student, or somebody that knows that school, that people recognize, that comes in there. It was brought up to me that they were thinking about trying to create some kind of room in here called a kill box, a $15,000 box that does nothing but kill people. Imagine that. You're setting this spot up to just kill somebody. I don't want that. I know these people are in there to take lives, nobody wants to kill somebody, so why have a room like that? And if people go there long enough, and they're going to that school, they're going to know they've never been in that room. I wouldn't go in a room. And I think about stuff like this, I would never go into a space I don't know. Why? Because there's nothing in there. So they're going to come in, and most of the time, you know, what happens? Well, we've got metal detectors, but we don't have anybody, and I think we should set this up. We have two choke points. Let these kids come in to the school, give them a week, tell them, "We're going to have somebody here, and we're going to have somebody here. When you come in these doors, there's metal detectors. We shut all these other entrances off, because we only want them coming in to these two avenues, because there's metal detectors." And we tell them, "We're going to check you, we're going to make sure that you're coming into this school safe and without guns." Now, I know, having two kids over there, I overhear people talk, I only have one good ear, but I can use it. I know that people carry guns into that school, and they have. Now, some of you might be shocked by that, I am not. I know how these places work. You've got a lot of kids, you've got a lot of people who don't care, you've also got a lot of people who are not cared about. I would also, out here at these front doors, put smiley faces on stuff. How many times have you guys driven by any school that you see, and it looked like a Every school I've ever seen, and I've driven all over the state, they look like prisons. Now, there might be some nice artwork or something like that once you walk in the door, but let's get these kids outside, they're out there, I know there's artists over there, let's get them to paint some happy stuff on these things. Make these schools heavier, you know, you can set it up to where your teachers and your faculty are greeting these kids when they come in the door. Say hello. Now, I was told, well, guess what? If you do that, you're going to slow everything down, and kids are not going to be able to eat. We can't keep the cafeteria open for 15 minutes extra to let these kids eat. We have to be able to make these kind of decisions to fix these problems. I also know the people threatened that school, they're not very smart about it, but I know they threatened the school. We should take time out in our days, they should. Set it up to where, you know, you have a couple of days out of the year to where you can look at the kids and just go through stuff. Say, "Hey, you guys got any problems?" If we don't start making these kids our friends, and we don't start making them part of our community, why do you think all the young kids are leaving this state? They don't, people don't care. Now, back to our security. If somebody comes in and gets in here, or if they come in here, which I can't do because the office has to, they have to come through here unless it's a student, okay? We can set up doors here, we can't do this here because of this round pole. That round pole kills a lot of stuff, if you have no idea. But there is another area right back here on this hallway, and I know the pretzel always comes in somewhere back here, but we can set up simple garage doors on those areas, and run them back to the office. I know there's two different spots for security that they have, they can set up to where there's a, whoever has control of the cameras and stuff like that, you can run it to two different spots. So if one of them's not there and the other one is, you've got somebody always man on that. So if somebody comes in, they can drop these doors down. Now, our big concern, our first concern with this, is the fact that these glass doors are not bulletproof. If we're not going to bulletproof those doors, and we may as well not worry about anything, because they can get into anywhere at that point, we should at least, I know there's glass doors here and glass, if we bulletproof that, and that keeps them from shooting this whole place up, which gives them time to get out and start hitting the buttons to shut these doors down. If you put these in here and drop them down, these doors are actually multi-function doors. You have two or three different uses. One, if you do have a worst-case scenario, they will come in, and with these doors down, they're cut off, automatic. Two, you can use them as doors to keep adults and students from coming in. How many times have people had, I went over there for Appalachian Power, they were talking about doing, installing new substations, and I was one of the properties they were going to go across, and I had to go over there. I went right by them, into that auditorium. This was open, and this was open. Anybody could go down there and do anything they want at any time. You drop these doors down, you give people designated area to go. If you use this door back here and drop it down, especially during athletic games, basketball games, students don't need to be down those hallways. They don't need to go to the lockers, and if so, you can set it up to where you've got a teacher door with, because you do not want anybody coming in here, letting them their locker that's not supposed to be there. That's what this stuff is about. We have to set it up, it's up to us as parents and grandparents, we have children, I've got two kids over in this school, and even if I didn't, we have to start thinking about safety. Now, I know what you're saying, this stuff's going to cost money. I have talked into two different sets of garage doors, I'm waiting on the third. Anywhere from probably $10,000 to $13,000 we can get a garage door here, and we can get one here. If we have to, and the good thing is, you can put smiley faces on the doors when they come down. I mean, how many kids would you have talked to at those schools, if you'd have went to Florida or Connecticut? If they'd have said... this barrier would have saved us thirty seconds. How many kids would be alive? How many parents would be crying? We have to start thinking about it. If we make a difference and we say, okay, let's go with this plan. Cause I've talked to the sergeant major, I've talked to the principal, and I've talked to Officer Lee. And all of them agree with me about this. We have to start making a difference in these kids' lives over there. That means that we have to be able to say, what's wrong? Come and tell us. They don't even wanna talk about how bad breakfast is. Because they're afraid that they're just gonna be ignored. Can you imagine that? If you get a sausage biscuit that you can throw through a window that you don't wanna tell anybody because you're fear of retribution? We have to change that culture. We have to get everybody involved. If we have to do it by setting up a few days during a week, I don't care when it is. You can do it before the holidays. Get into these kids' head that, hey, we're not just here to teach you something. There's a lot more I wish I would've learned in school than just facts and figures. The people that made the biggest difference on me, one was a guy I had as a substitute. Because he showed us something different that day. He showed us there was a bigger world out there. And we have to start doing that because they want these kids prepared for college and to pick college programs. When it is a national fact that most kids will change their major or drop out because they don't like what they chose. I hated what I chose for college. It took me forty years to become an electrician. And if I'd realized that a long time ago, I would've been a lot happier. And of course, we may not be having this conversation. But we have to be able to get to our kids. We have to make them understand, you're not just a number. We have to be able to say, hey, how's it going today? I don't care. I hate clicks and everybody knows in school there's clicks. We have to get past that. If you don't like a student and you're a teacher, quit. Talk to them. If we change their attitude, then all this stuff that we're talking about with Kyle Garrison and all the weightlifting and all that stuff, we change everything. We make them healthier. Because they believe if I go to school, I'm safe. I know, you know, I've probably gone over my time for what you guys, and you probably have a lot of questions about things that you may not understand and we can talk about that stuff. But I just believe in, you know, we have to be able to start making a difference. And if these kids don't learn that from us, what are they gonna want? When they get out of high school, what are they gonna learn? Now, again, I would like to thank you guys for your time and sorry about my article.
We'll give you credit where it's due on that. You take your C R R work. No, we appreciate you coming in and your comments. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? I mean, I think we all agree with you that, you know, we wanna do anything we can to make things safer and it's a national, probably a worldwide issue. So it's not just here, but you know, we certainly agree with you. There probably would be some things that we'd have to look into to implement some of those things. And you mentioned one would be the cost of metal detectors and all that kinda thing. Supervisors to do that, slowing down the traffic. These are just things we've heard in other, you know, venues with these things have been discussed. Because when, you know, you've got eight hundred kids and you've slowed down that flow of traffic, the impact has a long way in it. You've got buses coming in, where are they gonna be? How are they gonna get them in there? So, you know, those are things that logistically you have to deal with, obviously. I don't know about the doors. I would probably look to Mr. Gosny because we, then we have the issue with fire marshal and people like that. Everything that goes on in a school building, you know, there's some entity there that oversees that. So I don't know.
Well, they don't have to be a fire rated door.
Well, I don't know that.
Because they're only gonna be, you can use them in case.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know.
To stop people from going into that area.
I'm saying, I don't know whether they are or not, but I'm just saying, these are things that, you know, that, sometimes things that seem obvious to us. There are somebody out there that says, no, it isn't because of this reason. And I'm just throwing that out because that was the most, that one that came out to me immediately. Because have you been in schools and all I've had to address issues with fire marshal before? Things that I thought were perfectly fine, he didn't. So I don't know that that's a problem or not. I'm just saying, those are the kinda things that you have to deal with when you implement things. But, you know, I think we're all opened up looking at, you know, any things that might be out there that we might be able to do. Mr. Gosny is our facilities director and, you know, I don't know whether he, Greg's probably gone to conferences where they discuss, say, yeah, I know Mr. McKip and I have.
Everybody I've spoken to said, I've never heard of the garage door.
Well, I haven't either.
And that's what I thought and I was like, well, you know, I just don't understand the point of a Kill Box. Because I just don't understand how you think you're gonna stop somebody from getting in. If they can get in that door, which most of the time, I mean, it doesn't matter. They get through the first door and they're in the school. So what do you have at that point? You have this building that you paid fifteen thousand dollars to install, which some schools actually have now, that is nothing but some place for you to kill somebody.
Man trap.
Yeah, man trap. I couldn't think of the term.
To me, it was, the notion was Kill Box. I mean, and that's basically what it is. I mean, cause you're there to, cause you still got an armed fugitive in there or an armed person in there that's willing to take life. Unless you plan on throwing some kinda knock out gas in there with them to knock them out first, which puts people in danger. To me, just, I mean, I want to buy time. Time is what those people wish they would've had. And we, I mean, the thing about it is, I also know that they have ways to get people outside of the rooms. And I thought about this too, that I don't know, I still have to work on, I'm still working on a slide for the third floors. Cause I know the middle school has one. They have the third floor, but I can't figure out how to get the kids out of those windows without making some kinda slide out of it. I know they have them for the second floors and things like that. They already have things set up. But if you make a window, that just, one, you block your doors off. I mean, you guys have got the, apparently there's people moving around inside these buildings after hours. I mean, you block the doors for one. You can make a barricade out of the door. I know the stuff they're talking about is stuff that locks the doors and you can't knock them in. The problem with that is you can still get shot. Cause that's what anybody that comes through these things, that's what they wanna do. They wanna be able to shoot people and take them out. So if you can shoot through a door, I don't care what kinda block you got on it. And I thought about building a metal, just a metal frame and filling it with either sand or old newspapers that's wide enough to go across the door. Cause you can push that in behind that door whenever you shut it and you can lock it down. That means they're not gonna be able to shoot through that and kill anybody at random. So it gives everybody a time to get out the window. And you line your window up right behind them. The window, you want people going out, cause you do not want them over in this area where they can shoot in beside of it or maybe through the wall. You want them to concentrate on that door. More time they waste, more time it gets people out of the building, more time cops have to show up. I mean, I thought about a lot of stuff like that. I drive around by myself like a hell of a lot, like I said. Those ideas just come into my head. You make slides, you do everything you can to get people out. If that means moving certain students around, if you've got seventh graders and sixth graders up on the top floor, put your eighth graders up there. Why? Cause they're more physically able. Try to get down.
I have to make one comment.
Okay.
I've sat too long. I have to disagree with something Mr. Priest says that I don't think he meant in the way he said it. We would not do everything possible to ensure the safety of our kids. If we were gonna do that, we could spend a million dollars per child per year, have thirty different checkpoints, have ten sets of metal detectors everybody has to come through. This is America. The debate comes down to how much of your individual freedoms are you willing to give up for absolute safety? I understand your concerns. I have a daughter over there now, graduated one, two years ago, have another one coming over next year. I want my kids to be safe. I think that we as a board, that are people that are charged with these roles, do a fine job. I have my kids in Lincoln County for one reason. That is because I feel like this is one of the least likely places in the whole world, certainly the United States, where we're gonna have some of these random acts. Cause thank God you got old rednecks that live within five minutes of school, have kids there. Somebody comes over to that school with a gun, if one of our two police officers that are on site don't take care of the, probably have a lot of confidence in them, then I'm sure there's gonna be citizens in there. But for very long, we've got state police barracks right here, City of Hamlin Police Department right here. I think, I'm not willing to get up, hold on my personal liberties for a whole lot of measure of safety and that's me personally. Do I agree that school safety is a great thing? Absolutely, I do in concept. But in reality, you put those two garage doors in, you push the button at the wrong time, you just locked the shooter in with half your student population that can't get out, can't get out through the mainway. Neither can police officers or first responders get in. They've gotta try to get in through your windows or someone has to let them in through a door. So while there's positives to it, I also see a lot of negatives. I want my kids that have as many avenues, escape as they can have to get the heck out of that building if there's an armed shooter in there. I want as many police officers can flood that building to be able to come in every way they can. If, I mean, I've never heard of this man trap Kill Box. If an armed shooter comes in that school, I hope every round of ammunition in both of our police officers' guns winds up in his body. I couldn't care less if that armed shooter ever breathes again. I hope he doesn't. We coddle criminals. I have no, I mean, if we put in a man trap, he doesn't survive, yay. That's what deters this. That's what deters school shootings. I agree with you in empathy for our kids. We have, we have a lot of council, we have a lot of teachers and people over there that care about our kids. When the kids come to them. We have a lot of kids with a lot of problems. And I think we're doing a good job when we can identify those problems, addressing it. I know, I talk to my kids about these things. My kids don't feel unsafe over there at the high school or at the middle school. One guy bowing out, one over here. They don't feel unsafe. Those are the things I talk about with them. They don't feel unsafe. But maybe your kids have expressed concerns to you about feeling unsafe. I don't know. Mine haven't expressed that to me. I mean, if they did, I'm in a position where I could raise this suis ponte on my own whenever I wanted to. I mean, I think you have some good ideas, but they're theoretical ideas. Putting any of those things minimally into place is huge steps. There's a lot of positives and negatives to everything you mentioned. There's a lot that has to go into that. And it has nothing to do with money, nothing. That was one of the things you said that really, really got to me. If you could say you spend ten thousand dollars, I guarantee you it will save a quarter of a life over the next hundred years. Nobody sitting here would spend that ten thousand dollars. But you can't ever guarantee these things. How many of these schools have, the schools where you've seen the school shootings, have these kinds of safety measures? And the people get around them too, that they get around these things. These are not idiots that pull these things off. That they plan them. If they're gonna come in, if you have a committed person, they're gonna find a way in. Deterrent, being able to handle them once they're there is, in my opinion, the way you handle it. And we have two fine police officers on site during all the school hours.
Right.
I wish we had twenty. I wish we had twenty. But that's not practical. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to everything you said. I agree with some of the things you say. But it comes down to how much of your liberties? And this comes down to being in America. A lot of people lose this, this is my personal opinion. How much of your personal liberties are you willing to give up to go to that school that you said you don't want to look like a prison, but you want it to be a prison once you're inside?
No.
Yeah, that's what you said. You gotta go through metal detectors, you got doors everywhere, you got man traps, you got escape avenues. So we make, we beautify it, we put up smiley faces, but you're in a prison. You know what I'll do if we have that? I'll move my kids. I'll move my kids. I don't want my kids, when they go to school, I don't want them in that environment. And I don't think a lot of people want them in that environment. Maybe I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, people get a hold of me. Sean, you stream this, let me know. But I don't want my kids in that environment.
Can I clarify for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Just talk to me. I can barely see what you got back there, so talk to me.
Okay. Well, I understand one thing. I don't want man traps in that school. I do not want that. One, like I said before, the kids know, and how many shooters are somebody that's familiar with the school or a kid?
I don't even know what one of those things is. I care less about that.
Well, the thing about it is, I've heard about them being introduced by people like the FBI and stuff like that. They cost a lot of money, but the problem is, you're right. They are educated. They have figured out, okay, if I go in here, this is what we're gonna do. Well, think about that. If I told you we could put a metal barricade over this door once it was shut, you've got cameras in the hallways. They can see what people are doing. The one thing these shooters don't think about is cameras. They don't think about being seen because they don't care. They want as many people in their gun sight as possible. I'm not telling you that you can't have armed people at that school. I'm not. But what I would like to see is the fact that we should not have any students walking in that place with guns. Because all it takes is one person to say, I don't like you. Or one person to say, that teacher did me wrong today. Or one person to say, I know they've got a gun because I've seen them carrying it. Or I've heard they carry it. Well, guess what? That's the person you're gonna go after. Because once you try to secure that, then you've got your gun already in the school. That's the thing I'm trying to stop. I don't want them to look like prisons. It's not gonna be a prison because they have multi-function. When you have a bunch of students running around for a high school basketball game, you don't want them running around those hallways in places they shouldn't be. Let them go to the gym where they're supposed to or go outside because they're not supposed to be down those hallways. So these are deterrents. You don't have to use them every day. You don't have to have these kids. The only reason why they're using these is to let people know, hey, they've got metal detectors. That automatically is a deterrent. They've got somebody there making sure that these kids are safe going into the school. And I'll bet you money that these people that have had these tragedies happen would've wished they had some way to stop it or to at least buy time. That's what I'm trying to do. Because when you block this door off and then you give an exit, these guys in these hallways with these guns don't know what's going on. They have no idea. All they know is people are in these rooms and they can't get in them now. Now, am I saying it's foolproof? No. Nothing is foolproof, nothing. And I want those guys, I want those officers and the people who are supposed to have them. I want them there. It's not about trying to take away, I don't wanna take away your liberties. If you guys carry guns, fine. But I don't think anybody under the age of eighteen that's a high school senior or below should be carrying.
No one in school should accept a police officer. That's the law. That's the law. Mr. McKip, has there ever discovered a firearm on premise at LCHS? And it presents present to students? Okay, all right, go on.
But that's the thing, is that I also have my ear to kids who don't play golf, listen. And I've heard about people having guns. I've heard about there also being a game in Lincoln County High School. Imagine that. Lincoln County High School having a game.
Okay, if we can debate this, and you know, this is, once again, a debate that's held all over the country and I don't know that anyone has all the answers, but you all certainly made some valid points. As far as, you know, what you've suggested here, you know, these are things, once again, these gentlemen, they go to meetings, they discuss these things, you know, from those that come in from around the country. You know, we have various things that we do at our schools in anticipation of a problem. Does that mean that something still can happen? Obviously not, because it happens all the time. But, you know, it just... But, you know, at this point, you know, we're, we listen to what you've said. If anyone has any other thoughts about it, we'd be glad to entertain those. But, you know, there are pro and cons to everything we do, and I think what Mr. Baker said is true. I agree with him. That when you do certain things, you, you know, something else has to be affected by it. But I also agree with some of your things. But are all of them viable? Or, yeah, I don't know. That's, once again, because we get into these agencies that dictate how we operate as a school system. So, and obviously, you know, there are other factors there. But, you know, we'll take these things, what you said, into consideration. We'll share with Mr. McKip, and I know at times they, you know, they meet and discuss these things. We've talked about them numerous times, because like I said, we've gone to some of these school safety conferences ourselves. And there's always somebody coming up with something new. Are all these things possible? You know, I don't know. But certainly, we're going to, we'll think about it. And if everybody, as time goes on, and the members of the board, the administration have, you know, ideas or share back with us. Mr. Gosny, once again, he deals with our facilities on a day-to-day basis. He deals with the Health Department, Fire Department, the Fire Marshal and all these things. He may have thoughts and things that, you know, we aren't even thinking about today. But right now, I think everybody's given their thoughts here, and we appreciate you sharing them with us. I understand your concerns. You know, we all, I think we agree on that part. We want safety as much as we can in way, within reason. I'll clarify what Brownie said about me. I would have been a little bit too general there. But we do appreciate you coming. All I would say, other than that, was if your kids know of any kid at our school that's bringing up a weapon or anything, have them to anonymously make that aware either to our bullying, there's a hotline you can call here at the board office, if no one wants to identify themselves, share it with the principal, a counselor. If they know somebody is doing something like that, then tell somebody. That's all I would ask if they do know anybody. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's switch gears here and go to Angie Early. She's our Technology Director, and she's going to talk about Math for Life with a numerical four. Do you have an assistant back there?
I do. So the handout I gave you, first of all, thank you for letting me speak to you today about Math for Life. Math for Life is a statewide initiative to improve math achievement for our students. And so our State Superintendent, Dr. Payne, has started this initiative this year, and a lot of counties are doing their Math for Life kickoff in March. So that's what Mr. McKip and I and our county team had discussed as well. And Math for Life is a comprehensive approach to improvement at all programmatic levels in the area of math. So I want to show you some of the materials that the State Department has developed. This one's a public service announcement that they shared with the counties.
Good morning, class. I'm Professor Moore, and today's lab is very important. How much medicine would you give someone to make them better? We can use math to figure out the correct dose and concentration of medicine. Okay, team, follow up. Today, we're going to be talking about water pressure and water flow. If we have a two-story house that wasn't far, how much water pressure do we need to get it out quickly and safely? Let's use math to figure it out. We are surrounded by all of these awesome things. Did you know by using the power of math and these simple tools, you can figure out the height, size, and mass of a T-Rex? Now, as you all are aware, we are up eleven points from where we were this time last year, but now is no time to let up. I want us to be able to project even more work for our shareholders for Q3. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have the answer for Q? Jesse. Jesse. So these, some of the public service announcements like this one that you've seen, our Communications Department for West Virginia has developed these, and they're going to be sharing them with different media outlets to get. Our focus, the state focus, is to create a cultural change within our communities so that parents won't feel like, I struggled with math, my children struggle with math, we don't like math, and it's not something that we focus on. So overall, as a state, as we look at our data and achievement data and our needs assessment within each county, the state provided some framework for us, and then the resources too, like the public service announcements and some different resources that I'll talk a little bit more about too in my presentation. But in each county, we have done, for those counties that have signed on, which all fifty-five counties have now, is a needs assessment within our own individual counties. So we have a Math for Life County Team, which we saw the picture there on the front page. Some of our team members were not there that day, but that's a large part of our team. And the team is comprised of a representative from each school. We have administrators, we also have teachers, we have community members, we have central office personnel. And all of us working together talk about and look at our data and look at what our needs are here in Lincoln County to help improve our student math achievement over a five-year period. So this year is our needs assessment year. Next year actually is year one of our plan. So we've developed a five-year plan, actually just the beginning of it, and then an overarching goal for each year. And we're going to be reviewing that plan with our county team as we move forward, looking at our general sum of assessment data when we get that after this assessment. We're also giving the SAT tomorrow for eleventh graders at the high school. So we'll be looking at that math achievement data. And then setting, we've set a goal, and then we're going to be looking at our growth toward that goal too. Parts of our needs assessment involve the teacher surveys, where we administered that to our teachers. We did it on paper because so many of our surveys online now are just option boxes and, you know, not as meaningful, the team felt like. So we did it on paper, and we asked our teachers at all elementary grades. And then the secondary was math, science, and CTE that we surveyed. And we talked about what professional development needs they have, what areas they feel like they need more support in to be able to deliver more effective math instruction. We also looked at our math achievement data, as I mentioned. We're also looking at technology devices in our schools and how they're being used, what's working best and what's not, because sometimes, looking at the research there too, taking your Class Two computer lab may not be as an effective way of using technology. There may be a better way to use mobile devices, installations. So we're looking at some different concepts there with technology devices, and then also professional development needs for our teachers. So when we look at professional development, these areas through that survey have bubbled up. We need to do some standards unpacking. We've had some shift in our standards over the years, and we've also had some turnover. So we've had some retirement, you know, retirement, and we've got new teachers out there that need support. And then we also are looking at technology-based textbook resources. So those resources we've already paid for, delivering better training and more effective training for our teachers to use those, and also the ones that are provided through the Math for Life Initiative by the state. Highly effective instructional strategies, and then our assessment tools too. And really using the assessment tools that we have to look at our data. Not just we assess, we assess, we assess. We never really look at the data. So by training our teachers better on using those data analysis tools, I think that will help us, and our students too, having them take ownership of their achievement data. And differentiated instruction has been an area, as we've been going through the school improvement process with our side visits for our schools of improvement, part of the area there identified is differentiated instruction and how that's a need for our teachers from a professional development standpoint. And sometimes they might be differentiating, but it's a difference in terminology. So I think that's an area where there's kind of a disconnect. These are the supports provided by the West Virginia Department of Ed through their Math for Life Initiative. Now, my goal is to get several of these paper guides and resources printed through partnership with the CTE program. Courtney Frazier is the teacher. And I've already talked with her about it, and they're going to print the booklets for our teachers in our schools to use in those PLC meetings. But all this is available digitally too by the Department of Ed. Another piece of our professional growth that we have started is recording video clips of our teachers that are using technology resources. This is the Pearson Math Technology Resources that came with our math series. And this is Stephanie Workman, a teacher at Hamlin. She's a middle school teacher. And so she was willing to allow us to come in and video her using those resources with her students. And then we showed that to our county Math for Life team, and everyone really enjoyed that and felt like they took away some ideas they could apply. So I think we have a lot of very good teachers within our county that are excellent at different instructional strategies. And we want to do some video clips of those teachers so we can help teachers collaborate and learn from each other within our professional development. Part of that too, the second bullet I mentioned, leveraging distance learning equipment provided through the RUS grant, which is a USDA grant that was awarded to our county for distance learning. And I've been working with Ms. Rhonda on getting the equipment, the devices. That was something that Jonah Adkins had worked on prior to my arrival. But we plan to leverage that equipment for collaboration between our schools. Family engagement is such an important part of this initiative too. And there are brochures for parents at all the levels, elementary, middle, and secondary, that we will be distributing to our parents through our math nights, family math nights, also with our registrations for pre-K, kindergarten. So there are resources for families to use at home with their children to help support their math learning. And let's see, our Leader in Me Initiative as well, where we, if schools are having Leader in Me nights with their students leading them, if they, if the students are focusing on their own personal data from an achievement standpoint, setting goals, mapping data, whether it's attendance data that they're tracking and figuring out their own percentage, you know, all of that is math-related, and we need to tie all that together so it's not a separate, separate compartment. For sustainability, there we have a blend of funding with federal programs. And Mr. King and I have worked on some of that funding, how that might work at our different schools, different levels. And then also with our school improvement funding, it's something that will help us sustain possibly, as I mentioned, the technology devices and some of our professional development. The technology funding through Tools for Schools as well. There was an initial ten thousand dollar grant from the West Virginia Department of Ed for us to start this initiative. So we also have that funding to support. And then, as I mentioned, the partnership with CTE and working with, we have such a wealth of knowledge there within our CTE department at the high school. And I think just partnering with computer science, with medical math, with so many areas that math is involved in CTE. And I think trying to build those collaborative partnerships between our schools is going to help us overall. So the final step is to sign the pledge for Math for Life. And this is something that we, our county team, everyone signed the pledge. There's actually an online pledge. And I've given you that web address there in the presentation. And I'm going to show you another quick little video that they provided to us too about the pledge. But the pledge is actually, I pledge to approach math with an open mind. I will celebrate my mistakes as opportunities to grow. I will be confident and work hard to understand math and won't give up. Because I think so many of our students, and probably our parents too, and I know I will say, I'm not a math person, you know. And I think we all kind of have that to some degree. Unless you are a math person, then you're like, math! So I think it's a, it is an ongoing growth mindset that we want our students to have and our parents and community too.
From a young age, math influences our lives.
To create.
To build from scratch. With math, I learned to persevere. I learned to try again.
With math, I can move forward.
I learned to identify problems in the real world around me and find unique solutions.
With math, I succeed.
With math, I succeed.
Be confident, take the course.
Math for Life!
And there's the URL to MathPledge.com. You have any questions for me?
Is this an initiative of the State Board of Education? Is that where the funding and all is acquired or whatever?
The State Department of Ed began this initiative this year. So the ten thousand dollar grant came from the state to our county to start it.
Like the public announcements, all those things, they're funding those?
They are funding all that. They developed all the resources that are on the Math for Life webpage. There's a link to that webpage too from our county webpage. But there's so many, there are guides for parents, students, teachers, administrators. There's just so much really good information they've developed this year, so.
Now, from my understanding, that all schools will be involved as a whole, already involved in?
Yes.
Will there be activities at each school for parents, like in the evenings or something?
Well, at each school, they make plan, and we will support that. Right. And so what I've shared with our principals and what I've shared with our Math for Life team is if they, whatever resources I can help them with, and then if it's something Mr. King can assist with too, with Title I funding, or with, you know, whatever title funding that we can use to help with it too. So, yeah, we've, and I've talked with our principals about Math for Life at each of our principals' meetings too, just to let them know. So it's kind of, it's going to look different in each school because it's going to suit their needs and their focus, so.
What grade level does it go down?
It's everything. It's everything pre-K through 12. So it's all levels. And, you know, even in our pre-K classrooms, we have children taking home projects that involve math and bringing that back in. So I think we already are doing a lot of these things. And then I think the more that we bring this through our county planning, the more collaboration and we can learn from each other. You know, if you have a very, very strong teacher at one grade level and maybe another school, you have some teachers that are not certified because, I mean, we have that issue with math, especially with a lot of our physicians. But we can work with those teachers that need more support and partner up and try to learn from each other. So I think that's going to be a big part of our county initiative as far as our team because even just seeing the team work together, you know, and Sean was able to join us last week too in that meeting, but just being able to see them talk and learn from each other is really good. So I think we'll continue that next year and each year.
Do you have some way at the end of the year of gauging where they're at and where they should be?
Yes, well, we're going to use our General Summit of Assessment, which is for grades three through eight. Now, the early learning reporting system is the one for pre-K through kindergarten and there's a math component there, so we're looking at that data. Where the K2 area is weak on, you know, assessing math. So we're, we've been talking about that and I know Mr. McHiff has raised that question to the state level. And then, of course, in high school, we're looking at the College Board resources for the SAT, which you can also use, you know, for all grade levels really there because they can take a practice test, they can look at their weak areas, and then it also ties to Khan Academy for them to help work on their weaknesses. So I think the more, you know, I did a training session with our high school teachers on that too. And I think the more that we use those resources we have, I think we're going to see an improvement in our student overall achievement too.
This isn't a Band-Aid. This isn't a quick fix. This is a, as he said, five-year program.
Right.
Designed to change not only the way we look at, but the way we think about math at all levels.
Right.
To try to take away the stigma that math's awful, I can't, I've never been able to do it, I can't do it.
Right.
So as far as the results we hope to see, there, I mean, we hope to see some tomorrow, but really we're looking three to five years down the road for this to take hold and to be effective.
Right.
And on that issue, we're going to have to fund, and you mentioned multiple funding sources, but we're going to have to have alternative funding aside from the state in years two through four, right?
Right. And I think, you know, we can leverage some of our federal funds. I can also, we can leverage some of our grant funding that we're able to secure with Dr. Kersey. And I think, you know, by blending those things and also with Dr. Lowe with special ed funding, because as we're looking at the different areas of math that touch all programmatic levels.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think it's, and it's not like it's a magic bullet approach. It's not because it's a comprehensive plan for improvement and looking at all that. Attendance is even in there, you know? So, I mean, which affects everything, so.
There's such a shortage of certified math teachers. Are we, are we down three right now if we're looking forward next year? Three or four? I got it. The part of the initiative is to grow your own math teachers. Bill and I are fortunate enough to be part of a state board group. Bill's attending a meeting Friday where we're going to be able to work with the Department on the certification process whereby if we can identify students in high school, say there's freshman sophomore year that has an interest in becoming a math teacher, we can work it through Marshall University. And I don't know all the details, but I'm talking about, you know, specifics. But we, the possibility would exist that we could have students graduate from Lincoln County High School with an associate's degree, go to Marshall for two more years and would complete their undergraduate degrees as a high school math teacher.
That's great, yeah.
So we're excited about that possibility and opportunity. Bill and I was talking about that this morning. We, me here early in the morning, you were exercising, walking around the building and we were just talking about the fact that, you know, when was the last time that we had a student from Lincoln County graduate from high school and go to college and be a math teacher? And we think it's been 14 or 15 years since we had one of our own. I mean, until we started thinking about it, I was just floored, you know?
Right.
It's really just not a field that our young folks, people are going into.
Right.
Because they could make more money in another field or area with that, you know, that math school.
Right.
But with the promise of their tuition paid for, their books, you know, that would come with this program that we're, that we're going to build and the commitment from those students that they would stay in state. It's either three or four years. You know, I think it has to be, and I think this is going to be interesting, so.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
I apologize for the technical glitch. I'm still trying to figure out with IT how the Math for Life and three or four other things dropped off my calendar.
Oh, okay.
And I overbooked. So the next meeting.
If you could help me keep it out of Charlotte.
It takes at least two people. If you could do an updated picture if you didn't go. But I do apologize. I booked over top of it because it just, it along with three or four other things just disappeared and no one can explain why those things disappeared, which is scary because that could have been, you know?
Something financial.
Or worse, a kid's doctor's appointment or something.
Right, right, yeah.
Anyway, I apologize for not being there.
Oh, that's okay. No, I appreciate it. I understand. Thank you all very much.
Does Mr. McHiff have anything else regarding that topic?
Well, there is a proclamation that later on in the administrative section that I will need and have the board sign off on and put the official seal on there and find a nice frame. I'm, Suzie, work on that, but we can hang it up in here.
Even a seal? I don't think I've seen that before in here.
It's a first.
Okay, that'll make it really legal. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the administrative section then, please. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Curry made the motion and Mr. Baker seconded that. Mr. McHiff?
Item A, the following textbooks is recommended by the Textbook Adoption Committee, presented for public review and comment through April 26, 2019. Textbooks are available for inspection in the county office. And this is our most recent social status.
Adoption.
Item B, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions or school outings that have completed volunteer orientation. Item C is a contract with AEL Associates Consultants to provide an instructional skills workshop on April 9th, 10th and 11th, 2019, according to the terms of the agreement. Item D is the adoption of a resolution declaring Lincoln County Schools, Lincoln County Schools new hereby proclaim Lincoln County to be committed to the five-year Math for Life Initiative. And I am going to read this proclamation if I can talk. "Math for Life Proclamation by the Lincoln County Board of Education. Whereas Lincoln County is committed to advancing mathematics education for our students to compete globally for careers and ensure that the next generation of West Virginia workers are prepared for jobs of tomorrow. Whereas Lincoln County will ensure educators are well, are well-prepared to teach the West Virginia College and Career Readiness Standards for Mathematics for All Learners and improve students' mathematical learning and achievement using proven educational practices. Whereas Lincoln County seeks to work with school administrators and teachers to institute best instructional practices, challenging pedagogy, engaging thinking skills and thoughtful technology integration to improve students' learning and mathematics achievement. Whereas Lincoln County seeks to work with school administrators and teachers to institute best practices, student engagement and insightful leadership strategies to improve students' learning and mathematics achievement. Whereas Lincoln County seeks to work with school administrators and teachers to develop teams of school-based math leaders at the elementary, middle and high school grades who will be provided high-quality professional learning for Math for Life National Expert Learners, county trainers, state staff or county selected trainers. Whereas Lincoln County will establish, implement and monitor a five-year Math for Life Action Plan with measurable goals. Whereas Lincoln County will use the West Virginia Career or College and Career Readiness Standards for Mathematics to select their instructional materials and implement math programs, technology supports and community engagement practices to market their local Math for Life Initiatives. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Lincoln County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Lincoln County to be committed to the five-year Math for Life Initiative. The Math for Life Initiative is being officially launched at the March County Board of Education meetings around the state as well as the March West Virginia State Board of Education meeting. All are encouraged and welcome to parents, educators and businesses to partner with Lincoln County in the Math for Life Initiative. We request all students to take the pledge at and then hit list the website at www.mathpledge.com. In witness there of, we have here unto set our hands and cause the great seal of Lincoln County to be affixed, done at the Lincoln County Board of Education, City of Hanlon, State of West Virginia, this the 26th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2019, and in the 157th year of the state. Lincoln County Board of Education. And I would like for you all to sign this now.
You'll sign that now, then we'll.
And then we'll fix the seal.
And it'll become the official once we take action. And you stand with the seal.
Seal. Keep the seal.
And you have to stand.
And fix the seal. Now we'll fix the seal.
All right, thank you everybody. Good luck to everyone who's involved in that. Okay, let's go ahead and look at item C or E then.
All right. Item A, out-of-county student transfer for the 2018-2019 school year. Item F is out-of-county student transfer for the 2019-2020 school year. Item G, the annual certification of pay for JR OTC instructors at Lincoln County High School for the 2019-2020 school year. Item H, out-of-state travel for the following West Hamlet Elementary employees to the AB Combs Leadership Day at Raleigh, North Carolina, April 3rd through 4th, 2019.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of the administrative items? If not, is that an all yes vote on this?
Yes.
All yes vote. Okay, thank you. So now it is official, it's our, it's been voted on. Let's go to the finance section. I have a motion please.
How many?
Carol?
Second.
Larry? Great.
The schedule of invoices coming in, $389,841. That's attached. If you've got any questions, just let me know.
Down a little bit this time. You'll catch up the next time as far as your expenditure, occupation.
I hope.
That's a good point. Okay, is that an all yes vote on the finance item?
Yeah.
All right. Now, let's go to the personnel section please. Motion?
Second.
Curry made the motion, Rowley seconded that one. Bill?
Item A, employment of substitute service personnel. Item B, transfer of service personnel. Item C, employment of extracurricular personnel. D, leave of absence. And E, retirements and resignations. And I'd also like to add that we will not be having any hearings Thursday on it.
Okay.
We will not be having any employee hearings. And also that, is it the April 16th? Is that correct?
Yes.
April 16th meeting would be when all the vote would be for transfers and reps and so forth. And I think that takes a full word at that time. And I have to give credit to Mr. Leibor. It's been two years in a row that we've not had any personnel hearings and he does a great job communicating for our employees and they know and understand, you know, what we're doing when it comes to personnel moves, particularly related to what is going on with the loss of enrollment and subsequent funding. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We certainly thank you.
Yeah. Well, sometimes you have to, we have, we have a real good worker relationship with AFTWBA and the school service personnel and that helps.
I think it's most beneficial that they, they have trust in you guys that you're going to, you know, sometimes they want an explanation, but often, you know, laws dictate these personnel names as we well know. But they have trusted and that's what's important. That sounds great. Okay, is that an all yes then on the personnel schedule? Do you want to go through that, Gil, or any particular ones or just in general, like if they're listed? Nothing stands out or?
Just somebody may ask a question. Item B, there is a law that service personnel can only transfer new people once a semester unless the superintendent says otherwise and like Jack Garrison. You see Michael Browning resigned as a bus driver. So we think it's beneficial that Mr. McHiff does that, that we have him. And also what we do that any employee, if it were better then, if it's more money, we kind of go that way too. Sometimes we'll have half-time personnel that will be going to full-time. That's more money, more benefits. And Jack going from custodian back to a bus driver, he didn't realize that he got paid more to be a bus driver than he did a custodian. So that's kind of a rule of thumb we, we use on that in case someone asks.
Same. Okay. Personnel, all yes on that?
Yes.
All yes. All votes on that. Okay, bring us down to comments. Court members, anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. McHiff, you have anything?
So a couple things. One, just, just to let you know that next Tuesday's board meeting, Mayor David Flinsey Agnes will be, will be on the agenda to discuss the possibility of purchasing a drug dog. So we want to have a discussion, conversation about that. So he will be here next week for that discussion. The other item that was discussed earlier with those that are here who decided to speak, many of it looks like a little, just like around. Court members, I had left at your seats copies of county policy, one of which is the use of county facilities, which is policy 7510. Also a copy of policy 3113, which is a conflict of interest private practice policy. The copy I gave you is for professional staff. There's actually three of these policies, one for professionals, one for service, one for administrators, and they're all identical except for replacing the word professional or service with administrator. So those policies are all one and the same. I also have left, or left you a, the opinion of our attorney, our board attorney, in my discussions with her regarding public employees benefiting private gain issues. This, this concern that you heard about, I'm sure probably even before the board meeting today, is, is an issue or concern that was addressed, I don't know if it's, I keep trying to think how long ago it was, maybe about a year ago, this very same concern, this very same situation came up. And was addressed at the time and at Mr. Leibl at that time had, I guess, dealt with the matter, had a conversation with the employee about the concern regarding, you know, the fact that as an employee of the school system, you can't benefit financially either from using a school board.
benefit financially either from using a school board facilities. And, um, I really hadn't heard anything else regarding that matter until sometime around the first of the year. And I, I know it was sometime there after my life issue, issue I had, and I was out here walking in the evenings, and, and I'd see the employee working with kids, but it was at the same time that the, um, our strength and conditioning programs went off. So, you know, I didn't really think anything about that, and some, and someone did say something to me, had a concern, but honestly, I, at that time, I thought it was just part of the, you know, because it was football players, you know, who I saw in the evening. And I don't stay related, uh, typically. If I do, I'm down here in my office, not out walking around the hallways. And at that time of the year, you know, we had football, baseball, softball, and they're all in here getting ready to, especially baseball, softball, for sports. So anyway, fast forward until, I'm gonna say a week ago, maybe a little over a week ago, um, there was, uh, the same concern came back up, um, again, and at that point, I told Mr. Lible we need to have a discussion with the employee, and trying to work around Bill and I's schedule as well as the employee who, uh, was off work for a couple of days. It didn't work out until I could have that discussion with him until Friday. So, um, actually, we drove over to West Hamlin so that we could have that discussion. But it is, uh, it is in our policy, um, policy thirty-one thirteen is conflict of interest. That every professional employee is prohibited from using his or her position of employment for his or her own private gain or that of another person. Uh, I've, I've learned so much about this last few days in talking to our attorney. Uh, there, there's more to this than just, just what we know as far as, uh, students being asked to pay a fee, or even adults. I, I really thought this was just an issue more so for our kids, you know, charging them a fee to use our facilities. It's, it's much, much larger than that. Uh, in, in, uh, Ms. Tyree's response to my inquiry, I mean, she even goes on to talk about it being inappropriate. She gives some examples of a, like a cheer coach teaching gymnastics after school for a fee in gym. Uh, goes on to even say a teacher who'd be selling Mary Kay products at school and in school cafeteria. So, I mean, there, there's much, much more to this than I even, uh, envisioned or imagined.
This does not justify Lincoln County, either, does it?
This is state law.
Ever county, state law.
It's West Virginia Ethics Act and West Virginia Code six B dash two dash five, which prohibits public employees from using their public position for private gain. That's, that's the, um, state code. And our policies that we have are in line with the other school systems across the state in following this state, state law and state code. So there may be other situations out there as well besides the one that, that, you know, what you're talking about, that was discussed today, that it's gonna, um, require my attention, you know, as to what, as to what is happening. But I just wanted to share with you all this afternoon that it is quite clear that those types of situations are, are here. Unless, uh, as far as, you know, asking for, for money, someone could volunteer and do those things, and that's not a problem, or it's permissible, as long as they're off-site, they could charge for those services, but couldn't be on board property. The only exception, which I'm fairly interested in here, and I don't remember which policy it was, that allows for tutoring. A teacher can tutor a student, um, but that too has to be off school property, and that's the only exception. So actually, there's, there's so much more to this than I even imagined.
Mr. Minkiv, this, uh, this isn't anything new as far as the state law is concerned, because I ran into a situation which caused me quite a bit of trouble back in the nineteen-seventies when I was principal of the law. So, uh, this isn't a new law, is what I'm trying to.
Point out. And then I was reading in the code, I mean, it's even punishable by fine. It says violations of this act are punishable by fines of up to five thousand dollars, and these fines are not assessed against the school system, but rather the public employee found to be the violation. Um, anyway, I, I just wanted you to have this, this information this afternoon.
Is Ms. Tyree's legal advice public?
Oh, let me ask her. And I, because I, you know, if it's not an issue, I don't care.
Thanks, Jeff.
Share with you.
We kinda have.
Well, I kinda have, yeah. As far as giving, giving you the email, uh, let me, let me check it for you.
Thanks, sir.
Well, uh, as I said here earlier today, Mr. Minkiv's, one of his many, many functions are to make sure that we abide by the laws and of the federal and state government and state policies and all of those things. Uh, and, uh, we employ him to do that and implore him to do it. But, um, you know, I think, I just ask, I just thought it was necessary and he agreed with me since there's so much, uh, discussion about this, to just, you know, to let him, let everyone know where he's coming from. Uh, and so he's done a little research, and I mean, I've been in, like, I knew a little of this, or I thought I did. Uh, and then, uh, I've been in light David Moore, what Jeff shared, and I was able to look at, and then look at some of the codes, because, you know, you see some of the questions, is this a, you know, is this just a local thing? Do we have discretion here? You know, and that was kind of running through my mind. Then as I read through these, and I wanted to always look to those legal citations at the end of these policies. And then when I go over to my law book and I see what it says there, you know, it's real clear to me that, uh, you know, you aren't allowed to do these things. But I think what Mr. Minkiv has said here, that we've heard accusations, I guess for lack of a better word, of these other occurrences that may be going on. Uh, I'll say it like I was talking about those students that might know about somebody bringing a weapon to school. Somebody needs to share those with the superintendent so he can investigate. Now, if they're coaches and they're doing these things, that's fine, they're employed by the Board of Education, and they aren't profiting other than what they profit as a coach, you know, give a supplemental, uh, pay for a coach to do something. Volunteers, is it name implies, they're volunteering to do something, but they've been approved by the Board of Education. See, one of our concerns, not even, well, hasn't even been mentioned here, is liability issues. You know, if you're employed by the board, or you've been approved by the board as a volunteer, then our state insurance is gonna take care of anything that might happen, especially things of this nature where somebody could have an injury. Uh, if you aren't employed by the board, and if you're doing something that's not sanctioned or approved, or in this case, it seems a rego at times, then I'm not sure that that'd be the case at all. So, you know, there's some liability concerns along with everything else. But also, I don't think anybody is saying anything negative about Mr. Garrettson.
Oh, I don't think so, yeah.
Nobody's saying that at all. Everything I've heard about him has been a positive thing, but, uh, and, you know, I think Mr. Minkiv, he's told me that. Uh, so it's nothing personal, but if these things are going on, oftentimes, I, you know, like I told Jeff yesterday, it sounds to me like this is one of these things going to be discussed at a principal's meetings, and, you know, when you have all your staff together, county-wide meetings, to make sure, because some of these things, like you mentioned about selling Mary Kay products, you know, a teacher, I do this on the side, I bring my little list and lay it there in the office. Bill, you've seen that, and I have too, and no one ever thought anything about it. But that person is, I guess, violating this because they're using their position, I'm a teacher at this school, and I'm not even coercing any teacher, employee, or parent, or anybody else to, to buy something off of me, but I'm here at the school and I'm using my position as a, a means maybe of, that I get in your business. Uh, these things never cross your mind. And I, but I think now we'll all be more cognizant of that, and I know he will, uh, looking for those. But, you know, if anybody thinks that there's a violation going on up here, share it with you. And I've heard some things thrown out there that, uh, people believe are not proper, well, but some that he and I've talked about are proper, because, you know, if you look at our use of facilities, uh, policy here, you know, typically at all the schools, the principal makes that decision. You submit a form, you, I want to use the building for this. And then the principal will look at that, if they meet certain criteria, and oftentimes it requires them to have some type of insurance, and if the principal feels like it's, you know, it's okay, and it meets the criteria, they'll sign off on it. That's something that's done at the school level. Here at the county board office, that kind of falls on one of these two gentlemen to do that. But they follow the same, you know, same rules here. But you have to, you know, get approval in order to use the ability. Now, once again, we go back to coaches and volunteers and all, they're, you know, have a little bit more discretion. And we also always have to remember here now, don't forget, we have a strength and conditioning coach that is employed, but there, we pay them forty-five-hundred dollars a year, they're here after school during the whole school year, and they work with all students. So, and, you know, I know someone said, well, that's not personalized enough to me, and, you know, I guess I can relate to that. But there is someone here that we do pay to do these type things, and they're employed by the board, they're, uh, legally and liability-wise, you know, they're, they're good, because they have a job description, here's what they're supposed to do, and pay all of that. So, you know, we, we may have more discussion about this, and this will be found out, we're likely to discuss it today, but, uh...
Is this for public employees? If they were not a public employee, it would be according to the policy.
Public employees, correct. Except for the use of our facilities, you can't make profit. In other words, even if you aren't an employee of the Board of Education, and you wanted to use one of our facilities, we, we always use the kitchens as, as an example, you can't use one of our school kitchens to make things and then sell them, for instance, because you're using school facilities to make a profit, even though you aren't an employee.
No, no.
But some of these others are definitely designed definitely for employees as far as some of these certain policies and laws that prohibit that. It covers both areas.
Well, I have a couple clarification questions. One, following up on what Mr. Police Lee just said, if an athletic program wants to use a school facility to generate funds for the program as a whole, there's nothing wrong with that, correct? Okay.
With that in mind, profitable organization.
Well, I, I, I'm saying if football wants to have a hot dog sale and use the kitchen here, the kitchen over at the high school to cook hot dogs, sell them, and the profits come back to the football program, there's nothing wrong with that. That's permissible, right?
Correct.
Okay, my second one is a little more detailed, and you have to follow along with me. I, I'm not real familiar with the first news I had of this unfortunate situation regarding Mr. Garrettson, who I understand to be a wonderful person, who was doing wonderful things for our kids, was Saturday, and I saw it on social media. Um, my understanding is he is a teacher, correct?
Assistant.
Is he employed in a coaching role as well?
Assistant football.
Football, okay. Well, my question is, is this, um, and I, I don't know the answer, it's not one of those things, if I know the answer, I'm throwing it out there just to hear you repeat it and tell me how smart I am. In, in this situation, let's say that he were not a coach, he were just a teacher, and the football program had had this hot dog sale and had raised a lot of money, and the head football coach wanted to hire him, not in his role as a teacher, but wanted to hire him as a, um, fitness trainer for the football team as a whole with funds the football program had raised. Not, not I want you to train my quarterback in agility, or not I want you to train my point guard. Could the football program do that, or is he absolutely prohibited so long as he is a school board employee from providing those services to someone?
I have to run that past Liz to see what, what her opinion on that is.
I mean, I just think it is, I mean, a lot of laws are crazy. A lot of laws make no, have no common sense, in my opinion. But in a situation like this where you have someone who is doing as much good as he's doing, I understand it's limited to people that could afford those services, and a personal training at fifteen dollars an hour is a gift. I mean, it's a gift, but a lot of people here can't afford fifteen dollars an hour. And, um, I, I just think, I mean, I want to think outside the box if I can, I want to try to come up with a situation where we can keep this asset benefiting our programs as a whole. As a board member, I can't look out for the individuals who are using him, but programs as a whole, I, I can't help but there, but, but think there's some way that we can't do something, I'm not sure if it involves our facilities, but where the programs that are getting such benefit from using him couldn't retain his services. And it may be that the answer is no, so long as he's a school teacher, he can't, he, he could go to Knaud County and do this, or Campbell County or Putnam County, but he can't do it here. Again, there's a lot of things that make no sense, and it, it's just something that came to me as we were sitting here today, and as a coach, though, I mean, if he is an assistant football coach, would he be prohibited, assuming you, you could, you could provide those services, would he then be prohibited from providing services to the football team because he's hired as a coach? But could he at other programs? I mean, I want this asset here for our kids, because, believe me you, I've been to a personal trainer, and the things they can do for you, you'll never get in a group setting. You'll never get it, you'll never see the benefit of it. So the kids that have been blessed to have that have been blessed, and the things they learn, they'll carry with them for the rest of their life. But we can't, I mean, it's all pretty clear. It's, it's not pretty clear, it's crystal clear. Our hands are tied and the situation has existed, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sure there'll be other situations that's gonna come to my attention, a couple have already, as a result of...
I, I'm sure.
...so I'll be busy.
Jeff, that, Russ does bring up a good question, maybe you can run by Ms. Tyree there on, you know, if a program employs someone to do something this or something similar to that, is that permissible? Uh, like I said, there's probably all kinds of scenarios here we haven't even come across. But for today, I thought at least you could see maybe from Mr. Minkiv's perspective of what he's had to look at when he first heard about this, uh, and why, how he's had to deal with it. And, uh, you know, and he's gonna find out even more and learn even more as we go along here, but, uh, we'll, we'll just see where it is. But we appreciate everybody, and, and once again, we all, you know, have the same goals here. Uh, sometimes there's, uh, impediments in the road, or something in the road.
Well, you, you often see this happen, you have good laws that are designed with the greatest of intents, but in certain situations, the outcome that comes of having to follow these laws isn't one you like. It, the facts just, I mean, the, the facts are what they are, but when you apply the facts to the law, you get a bad result. But you have to follow law first, no matter how, how it affects legal. You don't like it, you have to do it.
And Mr. Minkiv, if you have any future updates about this topic, I'm sure you'll be sharing.
I will, for, for sure.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, anything else you want to share with us this evening?
That's all I have.
This afternoon, I keep getting, think we're at the evening, we're under it, quite yet. Okay, let's adjourn then until April the second, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. here in Hamlin. Motion?
Send it.
Mr. Wilkerson. All yes?
Yes.
All yes, we adjourn.